Thank you. We'll open the floor up now to public requests. I did receive a couple of cards. I know we have a group of residents, and that's where it seemed -- some of the cards all seem to be from. So, we'll start off with there. We have Peter Breton, Karen Crumholtz, and John McPhail. And, Mr. Breton, I know you're probably -- I think you represent several property owners, so if you want to extend your time beyond five minutes, please do. So, we're happy to talk Lake Worth Drainage District, and I've got some updates for everyone, too, because I've been speaking with their executive director, with the president of their board, with staff, and I know staff has some stuff to share, too. So, Mr. Breton, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep it within the five minutes, if at all possible. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Peter Breton of the law firm Breton Lynch U. Banks in Soraas, Merrius, 605 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach. I'm representing three longtime property owners who own homes on Southwest Seventh Street, along the north shore of Sable Palm Lake. They are Mike and Jane Juris at 1026 Southwest Seventh who are here, if you identify yourself, Jim and Ann Wolfe at 1106, and Bill and Marlene Miller at 1150. The Wolfs and the Millers both purchased in 1978, and the Jurises in 2001. So, we're here today. We want to mention, we did have a very, very good meeting with Deputy City Manager Brown on Thursday, and at his suggestion, I'm appearing here before you on behalf of the clients. And we are here today to request the council to adopt a resolution under the interlocal agreement that you have with Lake Worth Drainage District, calling upon the district to delete the north shore of Sable Palm Lake from their L-49 rehabilitation project. And let me use some background without going into too much detail. A few months ago, LWDD sent out announcements that it would be rehabilitating the L-49 Canal and removing trees, landscaping, fences, and all other obstructions from their canal right-of-way. And it has since begun work on that process, and they're up to my client's area at this point. LWDD did prepare a right-of-way map which shows that it claims to own the canal right-of-way in fee simple in most places. But the problem is, in the area of my client and approximately 12 other lots along the shore of the lake, there is no canal. It is a lake. It's a natural lake. It's existed. We have aerial photos from Lake Worth Drainage District itself from 1947, before this area was developed, showing Sable Palm Lake as a natural lake. So, it's about 12 acres now, since it's been reconfigured, but it's still, it's a lake, not a canal. And the plat number 12 of the Boca Raton square plats in this area does not show any canal, Lake Worth Drainage District or otherwise, along the north shore of the lake where these 12 or so lots are located. Instead, the plat shows, which was, by the way, approved by the city in 1964, it shows that there is no indication whatsoever of a canal. Instead, the plat platted lots right up to the shore of the lake, all around the perimeter of the lake, not just in our area, but the entire perimeter of Sable Palm Lake, with lots of approximately 40 feet more or less in depth, going from the rear lot line of the primary lot, say, in their case, Lot 10. Their Lot 10A extends roughly 40 feet right down to the waterline of the lake. That's what they bought. That's what they thought they were getting. That's what their title companies and their surveys and the plat all show. They were getting platted lots down to the shore of the lake with no canal whatsoever. So, I'm not going to argue about title and ownership. That's not within your jurisdiction at all, but it is within your jurisdiction as a municipality and under the interlocal agreement to prevent Lake Worth Drainage District from unnecessarily devastating this portion of Sable Palm Lake and creating an eyesore for the residents and for everybody around the lake who has to look at it. And so, let me explain why. The L-49, the section that they're working on, starts over at I-95 and travels east, crosses under Southwest 12th Avenue, and enters the lake after passing through a couple of lots from the west. In the lake, it spreads out over the 12-acre expanse of the lake, and then at the far side of the lake, on the east side, the canal resumes again, travels for a couple more lots, and then passes under Southwest Ninth Street to a culvert. But in between either end of this canal, the large lake is there that accepts the flow. The flow spreads out over the entire lake and then passes out the other end. At its narrowest point, this lake is 225 feet. So, it's not going to impede the flow. Nothing in this lake's going to impede the free flow of the drainage coming from the L-49. There's absolutely no need for LDWDD to get in there to dredge along the lakeshore here because it's hundreds of feet wide. There's not going to be shoaling or anything else. There's no need for Lake Worth Drainage District to drive its vehicles and its equipment through these 12 lots along the lakeshore. They're perfectly adequate access on the west side from 12th Avenue and on the east side from Ninth Avenue. They don't need to go completely across from end to end. And, you know, this is going to be clearing just for the sake of clearing. It's not going to serve any public purpose. When I discussed this on the phone with Steve Sherman, Lake Worth Drainage District's project manager, the only halfway plausible reason he could come up with for the need to clear everything out of these 12 lots is because, well, there might be trees and things that fall over in a storm and go on the lake and float down and plug up our canal. Well, first off, there's not that kind of velocity or flow in a big lake like this to pick up stuff. Secondly, if they're going to use that for an excuse, then they're really going to have to clear the several thousand feet around the entire perimeter of this lake to have the same effect. We only constitute less than 20% of the total shoreline of this lake. So, why devastate this area when the other 80% of the lake presents this problem that they're so concerned about?
Mr. Breton?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the background. I just wanted to suggest it's public request, because I already know some of the requests that your neighbors have made. You want to just turn to what you'd like us to do, because I think we may have an answer that you'll want to hear.
Okay.
Thanks.
Let me just close and just say, we would like you to adopt some resolution under your interlocal agreement, and if necessary, start the dispute resolution process with Lake Worth Drainage District and defer to the other residents.
All right. Well, thank you. And I know Mr. Brown's ready to speak about those. If the residents want to hear from Mr. Brown first, I'm seeing some nods, yes, because I'd already -- we buried the lead there, but I knew that request was coming, and I already spoke with staff about this. So, Mr. Brown, could you just update us all, please, on that particular request and also the conversations to date with Lake Worth Drainage District? And I'll share one I had 20 minutes before the CRA meeting started.
Okay. George Brandt, Deputy City Manager. This was indicated, just so everybody has some orientation as to exactly what's going on here. This is 12th Avenue. So, we're on the west side. There's Seventh Street. The lake proper, according to the plat, Palm Beach Farms Unit Number 12, begins here, right there. Can you give me the next slide, please? And it ends right there. That is the L-49 Canal. And go back. The L-49 Canal terminates there. The plats on either side show the L-49 Canal. The lake -- there's a confluence of the lake on both the east and the west. What Lake Worth Drainage District is asserting is that they have those -- between the two red lines are the right-of-way that they claim for the L-49 Canal. As Mr. Breton indicated, there are numerous -- there are certain areas that are in fee. There are certain areas that are by the chancery case, and there are certain areas that are by easement on the Lake Worth District Canal Right-of-Way map. Regardless of that, Lake Worth is proposing to clear the entire area of vegetation and other improvements. There are fences, some docks, et cetera. There are a couple of docks where there are collapsed pilings in the lake itself. Could you go to the other side again, please? Lake Worth, I think their main concern is the confluence on the east, and whether or not vegetation falling into the lake from the lots to the north shore would gather at the confluence and obstruct further flow to the east, thereby causing eventually flooding throughout the entire lake. That is their concern. I've had conversations with Robert Brown, the executive director of the district, and he's indicated that he proposes to recommend to the district board of supervisors this Wednesday, which is after tomorrow night's meeting, possible -- a possible adjustment to their plan that will allow residents to keep native vegetation and fencing 20 feet south of their plot line. In other words, it would be 20 feet from the plot line where they could keep vegetation, and then the district would clear 20 feet at the edge of the water. That's the 40 feet that was discussed before. Just by way of background, as Mr. Breton mentioned, you see that little parcel right there where I have the red arrow. That's what's called an A lot. There are A lots all the way around the lake. Those lots were platted subsequent to this area of the subdivision being developed, and were particularly developed as a maintenance easement 20 feet wide all the way around the lake for the purpose of lake maintenance. I think the most important thing for discussion this afternoon, however, is the fact that the district is proposing that they will only clear the first 20 feet from the shoreline and that the next 20 feet would remain available to the owners to fence and add native vegetation. And I guess the best thing now is to ask if there are any questions. I can go into a lot of history, but I don't think it's really relevant.
I think you could, and I know it's probably going to be relevant at the Wednesday meeting. So, I'll just share with you, because I spoke with Mr. Brown -- Mr. Robert Brown had shared the same thing with me, and I'd mentioned to him, I said, "Well, you know, there is the dispute resolution process. We can begin, we can file a formal notice of that, and I know residents would probably feel better if we did to preserve the status quo." And the reason I asked, I asked staff if we could be prepared to do a resolution tomorrow night in case it was necessary, in case the board, the residents, one, felt that the proposal that Lake Worth Drainage District is offering was not to their liking, but, two, even if they've -- or if the board decided, their board decided not to do it, that we'd at least stuck up for our residents, because I think that's important for us to voice our concerns, because the -- from what I've seen, and you've seen much more, the title history is very complex here, and I think, as I said before, two lawyers, three opinions, there's going to be more than two lawyers in this, and there's going to be more than three opinions.
The resolution that you mentioned is being prepared for tomorrow night, for council's consideration.
Okay. So, that's where we stand. And I don't know, Mr. Breton, or any residents, and now I'll invite anyone else to come up if you've heard any of this news about this new compromise, the 20 feet. Again, not our compromise. We're not advocating, you take it. We're not advocating one way or another. We're just trying to tell you, we've heard your concerns, and we're voicing them on your behalf to Lake Worth Drainage District. So, with that, if anyone else wants to come up and talk about this, I know in some of you, thank you for the copious amount of information some of you have been sending on this. Ms. Crumholtz, you were next, anyway, so please, come on up. Name and address, you know, five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Karen Crumholtz. I live at 900 Southwest 11th Court in Boca Raton. I am not in favor of a compromise of any kind. And I'm going to read my notes so that I don't leave anything out. I'm here today representing the residents of Sable Palm Lake. My family has lived on the 12-acre freshwater natural lake since 1971, and over those last 48 years, we have not had any water level, flow, or flooding issues. The residential lake located in the middle of an established neighborhood has always offered lake life amenities: beautiful views, wildlife, docks, kayaking, canoeing, fishing, and other family activities, a rarity in Boca Raton. For decades, the area has been maintained using the two canals and culverts located on the west and east side of the lake. There is also very easy access from the paved road on Southwest Seventh Street. There is currently no landscape dock, fence, or lakeside floor that is threatening the flow of water into or out of the lake. There are no high-risk or invasive trees that require removal or regular toxic spraying. These yards do not need to be mowed, sprayed, or cleaned up after storms by the district. They are backyards, and they're maintained by people who love living on the lakefront. The residents have many concerns, including property destruction, unknown expenses, loss of privacy and security, loss of real property via misleading quickclaim deeds, power poles and lines becoming the focal point of the lake, loss of property value, erosion, spraying of toxins, elimination of wildlife habitats, and overall compromised lifestyle and enjoyment of their homes. With regard to the property values, the canal restoration project in backyards of those 14 homes impacts the whole neighborhood. A local real estate expert estimated a decrease in property value of $100,000 per home, which will decrease the value of all the homes in the neighborhood. Additionally, over the past few years, many of these neighbors thought they were doing the right thing when they went to the Lake Worth Drainage District office to clear up their property titles. However, it turned out, instead of receiving a clear title, they were giving up their backyards to the district, having no idea that something like this was possible. The wildlife habitat on the north side of the lake supports great blue and white herons, night herons, several varieties of ducks, geese, hawks, large bass, turtles, the occasional otter, and alligator. It is upsetting and arbitrary to treat this lakefront neighborhood with the same methods used on a drainage ditch on the side of the highway. Sable Lake is an environmentally well-balanced habitat that needs to retain its current vegetation buffer. The residents are open to improving the natural habitat, not destroying it. At some point, according to the Lake Worth District Project Number 4795P.03, trimming trees to avoid encroachments over the canal and cleaning trash out of the canal evolved into clearing half the residents' backyard and privacy, so that personnel from the district and anyone else can have access across the backs of their homes. There is also great concern for erosion. If vegetation buffers of grass, landscape, and cattails are removed, when the wind and waves pick up, there is nothing to stop the land from sliding into the lake, particularly on the north side. The current system is working. The neighborhood does not flood. The banks are in good repair. There is no reason for canal rehabilitation and maintenance on the lake. Keep in mind that all this discord and destruction is being justified on the minuscule chance that we get the storm of the century. The residents completely understand the need for canal areas to be cleared, even though it was tough to watch a 100-year-old banyan tree get cut down to the ground last week. You are our city representatives, and we are asking that all the existing property enhancements and vegetation buffers on the lake be permissible due to the overall size, depth, and width of Sable Lake. Please let Lake Worth Drainage District know that exceptions exist, and Sable Palm Lake is one of them. It is truly a unique situation in the canal system. Please initiate the conflict resolution procedures according to the Florida Statute 164 that would allow the 14 residents impacted on Southwest Seventh Street to preserve their quality of life and property values by not upsetting the lake environment that currently exists. We look forward to your assistance in protecting our neighborhood. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Crumholtz. Well timed, and if Lake Worth Drainage District gives you five minutes, you'll be right on the money, because I think you ought to share that with them. I think you already may have been writing, but that was well said.
I haven't. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Third card on this issue, Mr. McPhail? And anyone else? Ms. Miskel, I see a card from you, but if you wouldn't mind, but rather, can we just go off with the, I think the one, maybe one or two neighbors, we can take this issue up and then move on to the next thing.
My name is John McPhail. I live at 1082 Southwest Seventh Street, Boca Raton. I for one was one of the ones that had the property taken away. Didn't know why, but I put on this here, remove cloud from title. It scared us. I was 69 years old. I didn't want to have anything move in the title. I'm an average person, middle-class. I work hard to be in Boca Raton. To lose $100,000 when I'm putting in $120,000 right now would be a pretty good hit. Somebody needs to protect. I was in the business of a prior police officer shot in the line of duty, former Marine. We helped people. We did what was necessary. Now, we and my neighbors need some help ourselves. Whatever you can do, please do. I had quite a script prepared before I came. I don't need much more to say. It wasn't right, what they're doing. We bought the house for the lake. It's always been a lake. I raised my daughter, fishing, boating, teaching her how to do things on the water. When I'm done with my house, I don't want to lose another $100,000 and retire with nothing. I gave time, myself, to people most of my life. I spent half our lives, my wife and I, preserving the older people in our family, and we spent a lot of our own money doing it. We're just simply asking for the help that we really need. This is no good. This shouldn't happen. Really shouldn't happen, and that's all I have to say. We need you guys to help us. This is a lake. Let me add one more thing. I've been there 30 years. The only flood I had in 30 years was the flood in front of my house when they put the speed bump in, and it's two feet of water. Okay? So, I can't get to my car in pants on, so I wear shorts. The bottom line is, there's time in your life when you've got to step up, like we did in the service, like I did as a cop, who was shot in the line of duty helping somebody else. I don't want any praise for that. I just want to see justice done. What they're doing to our lake or what they plan to do on our lake, aside from that, I had two guys come in from the Drainage District, walked in my house, looked at me, and were smirking and smiling, almost happy to give me that news of where my new property line was, which was right in that backyard, right up next to me, 10, 15 feet out, when I always thought I had to the lake. So, we're all the neighbors. This shouldn't be happening. We plead you guys to do the right thing for us, fight for us, like our attorney. Please, help us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McPhail. And I know you don't want praise for your service, you're going to get it anyway. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your comments today. Mr. Juris, I see you coming up. Oh, maybe not.
I'm referring to my attorney.
Very well. That's fine. Anyone else wanted to comment on Lake Worth Drainage District? If not, then I wanted to just have a conversation among us, because I've had the opportunity to speak to neighbors when I was in the neighborhood. That's how it started. I think it's -- I will tell you this, at least the response I've gotten from them so far has been a little more positive. I've not gotten the brush-off to the contrary. Both the president of the board and the executive director expressed a willingness to work with us. I think that Mr. Brown said, "Maybe that compromise doesn't suit your needs. That's okay." But I do think it's probably in our best interest to, if we have the opportunity now, and we're going to miss it otherwise in July, to at least invoke the procedure for dispute resolution, issue a resolution, or, you know, adopt a resolution authorizing staff to send a notice if it deems necessary, because their meeting is Wednesday morning. We won't meet again until July, and I didn't want the opportunity to go by, so at least the status quo could exist, and the neighbors could have an opportunity to work something out further. So, if there's consensus for that, I'll tend to bring that up tomorrow night, amend the agenda, and see if we can get it on there. And this just came up over the last week or two, so having, or not even last week, within the last week, we've really had some traction. That's why we couldn't put it on the agenda first. Any comments, Ms. O'Rourke?
Well, yes. I mean, thank you all. You know, I think that we should do whatever we can to protect our residents and protect the beautiful properties that you have and lived in for years. People come to us all the time and ask for special exceptions. Please, you know, can we do this? Can we have that? And we make decisions based on what the situation is. I don't see why we can't go to Lake Worth Drainage District and ask them for a special exception. I'm a big believer of cleaning the canals. I think the canals, I've been on the back canals there where you can't navigate, and I think that's important. This is not what this issue is, and it's very obvious when you look at it. So, I will support, well, we'll do this tomorrow night, but I'm definitely in favor of making the changes that we need to make for tomorrow night and supporting a, you know, dispute resolution. And my advice, I wish I could be there Wednesday night. I will be out of town that evening. But go to them, bring it to a human level, like you did today, and, you know, hopefully they can make a decision based on, you know, what you bring to them, as well as the pressure that we put on from up here. But we're here to support you. I am, for sure.
I think we all are, probably. I've got --
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I think we are all on the same page, you know, as not wanting to ruin the look and feel of the lake and the beauty of it and the natural resources that it provides for the residents on the lake, and not spraying all of the toxins, I think, is we don't need to do. So, I am all for doing the resolution and moving forward with it. So, thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing this forward. I think, absolutely, full support, anything we could to help you out. Don't take that as us taking up the fight solely. Let's be there together and keep, you know, the more people, the better, and the more they hear it, and the more often they hear it, and the louder they hear it, the better. But certainly, full support. I know several residents who live there, and it's a beautiful area back there. It'd be a shame to not preserve it and protect you guys as much as we can.
And I'll just say, I think, now, Mr. Brown, I see you want to say something. I think you have laid out, you know, you've laid out at least some compelling, unique circumstances here, the nature of the lake, that this isn't a normal canal, the water flow. I've discussed this with a lot of you, so continue to make those points, and I know your attorney will, and you individual landowners will as well. Mr. Brown?
Just for the record, the meeting, the matter is on the board's agenda for Wednesday morning, and the meeting starts at 8:30 a.m. in the district offices, which are on Military Trail in Delray Beach, north of Lake Idar Road, on the west side. I don't have the address right off the top of my head.
Thank you for clarifying that, though, that it is indeed Wednesday morning. I was going to say that.
And the most, I think, the most distinct difference between this and any other project that the district undertakes for their canal rehabilitation, and we understand the reasons why they do it, system-wide, to be able to ensure the flow of water, is that this is an area where there is not a water course between two pieces of land. There's no ditch between two sides of land with water in it, as was mentioned.
All right. Well, thank you. Well, we'll look forward to the resolution tomorrow, and I know you've got your talking points. So, thank you. This is still public request, and we have one more card. So, Ms. Miskel, if we'll let you go first. Thank you for your patience in letting us just round out the Lake Sable issue.
Mr. Mayor, I will introduce Ordinance 8462.
Thank you, Ms. O'Rourke. We each got one tonight. That's good. So, thank you. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll now turn to resolutions and other business, and we'll, the, we had a resolution that was added by the agenda, it's 16A. And so, Ms. Saxton, will you please read its title?
Resolution 84-2018, a resolution of the city of Boca Raton expressing concern regarding the Lake Worth Drainage District's proposed L-49 canal clearing project adjacent to the north shore of Sable Palm Lake in Boca Raton, and stating the city's intent to initiate the conflict resolution procedures of Chapter 164 Florida statutes specifying the issues of conflict with the district, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Ronnell?
Thank you, Chairman, Members of Council, Mr. Brown. Your Deputy City Manager will make the presentation this evening regarding Ordinance 84-2018. It's your agenda, I'm number 16A.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Ronnell. Mayor and council, the resolution before you is a result of the discussion at yesterday afternoon's workshop regarding the north shore of Sable Palm Lake and the Lake Worth Drainage District's plans to clear their right-of-way on the south portions of the property that abut the lake on the north shore. Based upon the discussions yesterday, the attached resolution has been prepared that expresses the city's concern about the Lake Worth Drainage District's plans, as well as states our intention to initiate the conflict resolution procedures in Chapter 164. And the main purpose of initiating those procedures, adopting the resolution, is for us to be able to continue the discussions we've had with the district regarding this project, with the district, the residents, and the city. As councils are aware, numerous residents who own homes adjacent to the north shore of Sable Palm Lake express concern about the impacts of the district's project, and city staff and the district have followed the procedures and the interlocal agreement we have with the district regarding notice, as well as discussion, and thus far, we have been able to resolve the, unable to resolve the issues regarding that clearing. The interlocal agreement that provides when such a resolution can't be reached, the city council may initiate the conflict procedures, and those, the act, the statutes, Florida statutes actually require continued dialogue toward a mutually acceptable resolution of the issues. At this time, the district has suspended the clearing operations on the north shore at the request of the city. at the request of the city. The resolution expresses concerns about the impacts, as I mentioned, and the, our intent to initiate conflict resolution procedures so that we can have further productive discussion. The issues that we've identified on the north shore of the lake, based upon input from the residents, as well as our analysis, are the scope and necessity of the district's clearing project itself, as well as the authority of the district to conduct the project, appropriate review and consideration of property rights of the residents adjacent to the north shore, either as a result of previously issued permits or otherwise, the potential impact of the removal of vegetational wildlife habitat, environmental patterns, migratory patterns of birds, et cetera, the impact of the removal of vegetation disturbance of the environment on the character and aesthetics of the neighborhood, the loss of vegetation and green space, and the potential that removal of fill would cause erosion of the banks of the north shore of the lake. The Act provides a process with regard to the conflict resolution procedure that provides that after passage of the resolution, a letter in certified copy of the resolution are provided by the city to the executive director of the district by certified mail, return receipt. The letter identifies the conflict, identifies the process, and we are going to propose a date and location for a conflict assessment meeting between the city manager designee and the executive director of the district. The meeting would be open to the public and needs to be held within 30 days of the date that the district receives the letter and resolution by certified mail, and 10 days published notice of that meeting is required. As we discussed yesterday, the district is holding a public meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30 a.m. in their district offices at 13081 Military Trail in Delray Beach. We've been advised that the district's going to consider a potential modified program that would have the district clear the first 20 feet of land adjacent to the lakeshore, and allow the residents to fence and plant native vegetation on the next 20 feet north of the cleared area, as well as quit claiming the district's interest in the land to the owners in exchange for an easement over that quickclaimed area. The residents have indicated they will attend the meeting. I am going to attend the meeting, and I believe the mayor is going to attend as well. The district's potential modifications have not yet really, really been presented in detail to the city staff, considered by the, or considered by the district's board, nor have they been presented, to my knowledge, to the, to the public in a public forum. My understanding is that the district has presented the modifications to Mr. Breton, who represents certain of the residents, as legal counsel. The board hasn't heard from the residents regarding the modifications or other aspects of the project. Tomorrow's meeting may result in an outcome satisfactory to the residents of the district and the city, and should that be the case, we could conclude the conflict resolution process pretty much immediately, in due course. If a satisfactory outcome is not achieved, staff is going to request that the district continue to suspend further action on the clearing while we have time to have further discussion and the dispute resolution process can be completed. I'd like to point out that the city has had a continuing cooperative relationship with the district since the inter-local agreement was put in place, and we have been able to resolve similar issues regarding the district's canal rehabilitation projects throughout the city through that cooperative dialogue. The conflict resolution procedures should be viewed as an encouragement of that continued dialogue in the clearing of the north shore of Sable Palm Lake, and really, it's because of our, our city meeting schedule that it's probably appropriate to adopt the resolution this evening, so that we have the opportunity to continue the dialogue as part of the process. The resolution provides that our, the city council's intent in adopting it is to encourage continued intergovernmental cooperation, communication, and coordination efforts to reach an equitable, expeditious, and effective resolution that promotes protection and improve the health, safety, and welfare of the city's residents. We're going to suggest in the letter that transmits the resolution to the district that the initial assessment meeting between the two staffs of the district and the city be held during the week of July 9th, in order to allow appropriate city staff to attend, and at that meeting, we would discuss issues pertaining to the conflict and discuss each entity. We would then, as staff, be able to report the outcome and current status of the matter to you all as a body at your July 24th meeting. If we are unable to resolve the issues by then, the Act provides for a joint public meeting of the governing bodies of the city and the district. That meeting is supposed to occur within 50 days of the date the district receives the letters, which would be in the first days of August, unless both governing bodies mutually agree to an extension of time, which, based upon our previous work with the district, is likely to occur if it's necessary. Not guaranteed, but it would probably occur. Accordingly, you all, as a city council, will have an opportunity to consider the status of the matter as a body at the July 24th regular meeting, and you can direct further action as necessary. And as, just as a summary of the final part of the statute, if a resolution, the conflict still cannot be reached, the Act provides for mediation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brown, for that thorough backstory, and just for anyone watching at home, including some of the affected neighbors, could you just describe how their individual disputes should, in your opinion, proceed independent of this resolution?
Individual owners that have concern about issues of title, or issues of the rights of the Lakewood Drainage District to clear property, whether, or whether or not their right-of-way is actually effectively in place, they should pursue those individually, because those are individually, individual property issues that should be pursued. Any other action that they feel is necessary, they should also continue to pursue on their own, because the city's authority in this matter is really limited to dialogue with the district. We don't have the authority to tell the district, "You may not do this."
Right, so just to be clear, this is, this would be our effort to help enhance dialogue, but have, we have no authority, and the district is still able to do what it's able to do?
The district would be able to do, able to do what it's able to do, just as it has been in the past. We have, we have been able to negotiate specifics on specific properties in the past. This tree may remain, but those must go, those sort of things, based upon the district's clearing. As we mentioned yesterday, this situation is, is unique, because there is not a water course between two bodies of land. There's a water course next to land, because of the situation with the lake. The district has its reasons for wanting to have a clear path across the north shore of the lake for maintenance of its canals on either side, as well as the water that passes through the lake to those canals, and the neighbors are concerned that it really may not be necessary. So our function, I believe, is to facilitate dialogue and to see what options may be available as ideas come forward during the discussion process.
All right, well, thank you for clearing that up for everyone. Council members, any other questions for staff? Ms. Mayeout?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. So, we passed this resolution tonight, let's say we do that, and then tomorrow's, at tomorrow's meeting, things are worked out and everything's, how do we stop the resolution? I mean, just logistically, I just don't understand how that works.
If we are able to resolve the conflict resolution procedure that started, and there are certain things, for example, if the district says, as they said, "We will, we wish to clear the first 20 feet and sod it and use it in the future as an access road," and the residents can put up a fence at the 20-foot line and put native vegetation in the, in the other 20 feet, those would be memorialized in a letter to the district saying that we have agreed that these are appropriate, and we would go for, that, that the council as a body, you would do that in July. We could certainly agree in advance with them that these are the resolutions, and that everybody's satisfied, but formally, once the process is instituted, you need as a body to say, "We've, we've finished the process," and we would do that by letter to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to be clear, under the statute, essentially, the procedures provide, as Mr. Brown said, for a resolution to be declared. If it turns out that there's no action that needs to be taken for a resolution, let's say the private property neighbors work things out with the district, and there's no further action, the statute doesn't actually require anything, if there's no action for the, for the council to do, or some further, but if there are further steps or procedures that we enter into, the council can adopt a resolution in July.
As the city attorney mentioned, we've had situations in the past where it was necessary to finalize it with the council, to say that not everybody's satisfied, but we believe that this is a reasonable compromise in this situation. There have been others where, as Ms. Freezer mentioned, everything was worked out in the field, and there was no need to go any further.
Council members, any further questions? Ms. O'Rourke?
Just a comment, I just think this is the second example tonight of the staff moving expediently on something that was important to get done quicker than other items may, and this is to protect the residents' quality of life, so hopefully, we can come to a resolution, and they'll be satisfied.
Thank you, Ms. O'Rourke, and thank you for the reminder. Yes, staff works incredibly hard, and sometimes situations come up, and we have to move, roll with the punches, which we're doing. Council members, any other questions? All right, Mr. Rogers?
This is what I also emphasized, that it would have, yes, it needed to be acted upon expeditiously, mainly because of the city's meeting schedule, in order for us to be able to have the resolution in place in case we're not able to work something out tomorrow, or down the road in the next couple of weeks. The district has been cooperative with the city in suspending the operation and continuing to try to come up with something that will work for everyone.
Mr. Brown, tomorrow, will you speak publicly tomorrow morning at this meeting regarding this?
I am not on the agenda. Mr. Brown of the district, the executive director of the district. Mr. Robert Brown is on the agenda. He will be making a presentation to the board, I believe, about the, the proposed modification to the plan, which I mentioned. I think they will take input from the residents. If I am requested to speak to provide background, I'm sure, more than willing to do that. If the residents ask, you know, present what the city's position is, I may very well be asked by the board to discuss the resolution, or if the mayor is there, he may be.
And the residents will have the opportunity to voice.
My understanding is the residents are going to be given an opportunity to speak as part of the process.
Well, they did a very good job representing themselves yesterday, so I assume they will tomorrow.
And as, as the mayor pointed out, they need to continue to do that individually, to pursue their, their perceived rights.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions for staff, we'll open up the public hearing at this time. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter, please come forward, give your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Jim Wolf. I live at 1106 Southwest 7th Street in Boca. I'm right in the middle of the area that we're talking about on the north shore of Sable Palm Lake, which the district wants to call a canal. I just want to express my gratitude to the council for their active participation in this. I think we have a resolution that frankly, because of some unique circumstances on my part, I've owned this property for 40 years, and we do have a, a title dispute, literally, with Lakewood Drainage District over that, so, and I don't want to get into that tonight and so forth. That will get resolved with the, with the Drainage District, but I wanted to express my, my gratitude to the city and to the managers and the staff for all that they've done. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment? All right, seeing no one, and we had a group of residents speak yesterday and talked about this extensively, so, thank you again to those residents who came forward. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. Is that moved?
I'll second.
I'll take it from Ms. Mayeout.
We'll take it from Ms. Mayeout, I think she got it under the wire. So, motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Ms. Mayeout. Council members, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I would just say, now, when I look at it in Google Maps, it says Sable Lake, Sable Palm Lake, when, you know, it looks like a lake, there's no reason that we can't treat this as a lake, and I hope Lakewood Drainage District sees that. They have access if they need, they could get to it. It's just a shame. It's a pretty special area, and it'd be nice to treat it as a lake and allow lake-like activities to continue on there, so I hope that comes across tomorrow and we get resolution for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just add, and I wanted to reiterate, I spoke yesterday with my conversations with Mr. Brown of that district yesterday, I spoke with him again today, and President Alderman of the board, and I will say, since the city has reached out, or at least I have, they've been, you know, very communicative, cooperative, and I hope that that will continue tomorrow and even after this process. So residents know that we're, we're trying to enhance the process for you, and that's why we jumped right on this. So if there's no further discussion, Ms. Saxton, will you please call the roll?
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Mayeout?
Yes.
The motion passes four votes to zero.
Thank you.